Everyone will please take their seats, we will get started. Well, good evening everyone and welcome to the October regular meeting of the City of La Crosse Common Council. At this time, the council will recite the Pledge of Allegiance and listen to an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, the council will observe a moment of silence. For those that wish to participate, please stand as you are able. Again, good evening, and this meeting is now in order. The first items to be addressed will be the minutes of the September regular meeting, the report of the Department of Building and Inspections for the month of September, and the report of the Director of Finance for the month of September. Motion on the floor is to approve if there is no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Next, we have items for notice and discussion. The Chair will recognize the City Finance Director.
Thank you Mayor. For those of you that are traveling to the annual league meeting next week, just a reminder that I do need detailed itemized receipts from each and every one of you in order to be reimbursed. I can't just accept a generic credit card statement or whatever, it has to be itemized in detail. So, just for that reminder, so that you can get reimbursed. Thank you.
At this time, the Chair recognizes the City Public Works Director.
Tomorrow, beginning at 11:30, down at the Municipal Services Center, the Street Department, we will be hosting our third annual snowplow rodeo skills competition. Again, begins at 11:30, 11:30 till about 2:30, 3 o'clock. Our plow drivers will be attempting to negotiate a preset course with snowplows, looking for pieces of equipment that have some airs or whatever, so invite all of you to come down at about 11:30 tomorrow to Municipal Service Center. Thank you.
And we have a request for a notice from our County Planning Department, Mr. Charlie Handy, but I do not see him present here. If there are no other items for notice or discussion, the Chair recognizes a council member from the 15th District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a quick couple of seconds to thank Art Fay and the staff of the La Crosse Center for having the restrooms open during the Maple Leaf Parade. I know we all received an email on that, and actually, the parade was in progress when I had a constituent come up to me and say, "That was really nice that that was open." So, that was one of those small things that we do, but I'm sure it was very much appreciated by the public.
Chair recognizes a council member from the 5th District.
Thank you. I'd really like to thank our Protective Services for their work to keep our community safe during Oktoberfest. They really deserve recognition for their efforts, and I know I and my constituency are really appreciative of the work that's been done these past few weeks, so, thanks everybody.
Chair recognizes a council member from the 13th District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the La Crosse Police Department and all the agencies that were involved in the apprehension of Mr. Lepch in the arrest form, the murders on Main Street. A lot of times, we hear a lot of things in the paper, and people talk about crime in the way that sometimes they don't think they're doing a good job, but at this point in time, we need to give them congratulations on a job well done.
Are there any other items for notice or discussion? If there are no other items for notice or discussion, we have a Fire Department badge presentation. This time, Mr. Assistant Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council and the public tonight. I'm here to present Keegan Murphy and Blake Hunt as our two newest firefighters of the La Crosse Fire Department. They have completed their one year of service, passed all trainings, tests, and are here to get a badge ceremony being presented by Keegan's wife Alyssa and Blake's captain, Captain Joe Fermonik. Keegan was hired last August. Keegan is currently assigned to B Shift at Station 2, and he is on our water core team. Keegan is one of the paramedics we have on the Fire Department at this time, and he got his college education at Fox Valley Tech, and Keegan is also a veteran. He's served in the U.S. Marine Corps from 1995 to 2005, and then he joined the firefighter Mountain View firefighter protection district out in Colorado before he came to the La Crosse Fire Department last July, or August, excuse me. His wife is Alyssa here to pin his badge on, and he has his son Kellen, who's two and a half, and his daughter Tatum, who has just turned one year old. Keegan likes to do a lot of outdoor activities like us firefighters do, hunting and fishing, but I'm not sure if he's really going to have the time raising this young family that he has right now. His wife Alyssa will be pinning on the badge. Blake got hired last August as well. Blake is currently assigned to A Shift, Station 4, and his crew is down here tonight with him. Blake is an EMTB with us, and he has graduated at Casston High School back in 2005. Blake attended WTC as a fire protection technician and graduated an associate degree in 2011. He interned with the Fire Department as a firefighter student at WTC in 2010 with us, so we've known Blake for a while. Blake's also been on the Casston Fire Department where he grew up, and also served on the Casston First Responders. He likes boating and water skiing in the summer, and he currently serves for the last seven years as the Casston High School Track and Field Coach. His captain, Joe Fermonik, will be pinning on his badge. Both of these firefighters have excelled in their first year with us. Both have had previous work experience with fire and EMS, so that accelerated their learning curve with us. Both have put in for posted openings on core teams and assignments in their first year as I received these requests. We're proud to have Keegan and Blake on the La Crosse Fire Department and know they will be assets to the department, the city, and all the citizens and visitors of La Crosse. Alyssa and Captain Fermonik, if you would step forward and pin the badges on Keegan Thank you very much.
The first item that the council will take up is the veto by the mayor. Ms. City Clerk, would you please read the veto message?
In ordinance to amend, create, and repeal various provisions of Section 20.25 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of La Crosse relating to off-premise and on-premise sign and billboard regulations. Dear members of the common council, I hereby veto the above referenced ordinance. I believe this ordinance reaches beyond the purview of governmental responsibility. I concur that this ordinance will, if enacted, result in aesthetic improvements to corridors within our city. I do not believe the potential aesthetic improvement gained from this ordinance justifies the deprivation of property owner rights to improve property with signage in a fashion that is denied by this ordinance. I believe this ordinance regulates beyond the intended regulatory role of our government. Sincerely, Mayor Mathias Horder.
What is the pleasure of the council in regard to this item? The Chair recognizes a council member from the 8th District.
Thank you. I move to override the mayor's veto.
Motion on the floor is to override the veto as there is discussion. If there is none, please cast your votes. The veto is overridden. Chair recognizes a council member from the 17th District.
Thank you, Your Honor. Second item of business for the council this evening is a reconsideration item requested by Councilmember Paul Manninger.
I'll need a motion to reconsider. Motion on the floor is to reconsider. There is no discussion. Chair recognizes a council member from the 14th District. I figured I'd better explain why I brought this back for reconsideration. You'll have to forgive me, I want to get all my points out, so I may do some reading as I speak here. I also want to point out that I did bring both back for reconsideration, both the Committee of the Whole and the HPU issue, because I know for some people, those two issues are inseparable. But first of all, I want to say that this is something that I've been thinking about for a long time, and it's a decision I came to on my own. I also have to say that I do disagree with any notion that any of this was done with anything less than good intentions. This...I do feel that we should reexamine this decision, however. I did say last month, and I will say again, I believe that keeping the public hearings is important. I believe this is where we have our most productive discussions during our meetings every month. While we...La Crosse may be unique in allowing public hearings to the extent that we do, I believe it is too valuable to do away with. I can honestly say I would sign any petition for any one person, and I believe most people here would. I don't believe getting five signatures would be a problem. Therefore, it raises the question, why have that requirement? What about future councils? And why don't we just do it by request only? I understand this amendment was added to keep the public hearing option alive, and that is a good thing, but I feel that this will also create an unnecessary burden for those wishing to speak before the entire council. I also think that we should, if nothing else, have another discussion, for this was initially an HPU issue, and this is an escalation of an HPU issue. I don't...because this was an issue pertaining to HPU, that the Committee of the Whole issue was added to, I do not believe that public discussion on ending the Committee of the Whole was given a proper chance, and we've all had more time to think about this. Not asking for a complete 180 on this, but I am asking for reconsideration to have another discussion. We could have several options at that point. There is one option, however, I do feel would be a good idea, to reduce the redundancy and increase efficiency while keeping the public hearings as well, without the five signature requirement. What we could do, while keeping the HPU changes and Committee of the Whole changes intact, we could have the public hearing at the beginning of our regular council meeting every month. Started at 7 o'clock, the committee chairs could convene and go over through each public hearing without us debating or voting. We would then be able to listen to public hearings on every issue and ask questions of those here who have...who wish to speak. The public then would not also have to sit through potential hours of us debating amongst ourselves once their public hearing is done before being able to speak. Following completion of those public hearings, we could then continue our regular city council meeting as scheduled, and then we would debate amongst ourselves, have a final vote. I believe under this structure, we could keep the public hearings intact without the signature requirement while reducing redundancy of the Tuesday night meeting as well. This is just one option, however. We could discuss other options, but to discuss any of these, we would need to vote to reconsider, so I ask you to do that. Thank you. A motion on the floor is to reconsider. Is there further discussion? If there is none, please cast your votes on reconsideration.
Eight, 10, and 13.
Motion is carried. Is there discussion on this item? If there is none, what is the pleasure of the council in regard to this item? Chair recognizes a council member from the 3rd District.
You know, I don't know that we properly noticed the community that this was going on. The elimination of the council of the whole was slipped in at JNA with really no notice to the public. They had to be watching very closely that this was going to be happening, because it was not part of any previous agendas. That being said, I think we need to send it back to JNA, we need to hear from the public. I would ask for a 30-day referral.
Motion on the floor is to refer for 30 days. Is there discussion on referral? Chair recognizes a council member from the 10th District.
You know, there has been...at the first meeting, you had two landlords who spoke against it, who are known to all of us, okay? And then, 30 days later, with great hullabaloo and tape over the mouth and placards, you get four speakers, who really, all they offered was intimidation. That's all they offered. Two of them went so far as to tell you they like our soapbox. And I would recommend to those four, the way to do that, I've been opposed in my last four elections. You want the soapbox, you get 20 signatures, and you go out and you knock on the doors and so you see how you fare, okay? One of the speakers, on Tuesday night, did that and only got 18 votes in the primary, thus achieving the only record of only person ever getting less than they had submitted on their petition. All right, the public, there are 50,000 people in this community, and you've heard from seven, and they didn't do anything to advance this debate. Now, Mr. Becker came up with the five idea, and that was to allow flexibility. Now, last month, we accommodated your desire to have a sunset provision, so this expires in June. You pulled a sweeney on us and you voted against it after we adopted your amendment. All right, but I think we did it in good faith. I don't think referring it's going to gain you anything. In fact, it's going to muddle the waters, because I think, Mr. Matty, am I right? It is now a duly constituted rule of the city council and would take two-thirds to repeal it?
Mr. Attorney, would you like to comment on that?
It takes a two-thirds supermajority to enact a new rule. What was done right now is a reconsideration, which simply requires a majority vote, so right now it is...
Reconsideration would be 50%, but to change the rule would require a two-thirds vote, would it not?
Your rules require a two-thirds supermajority vote to enact or change a rule.
Correct. So, we have an existing rule which says no public hearings as of January 1st for a trial period through June something or other, and it would take two-thirds to change that.
Correct.
Right. So, I...and you can't knock what you haven't tried, and I think we need to try it. I think this is...I've been around here a long time. This is the biggest single advance in governance here that I have yet to witness. Now, the bar is pretty low for that, because we really haven't done anything in my time here to improve governance. So, this is not only a significant thing, but it's probably the first. And so, I don't know that anything's to be gained in referral, nothing, and I think, frankly, we should try it. And if it doesn't work, then we can repeal it.
Chair recognizes a council member from the 8th District.
Thank you very much. I was here in 1968 as a reporter, not in this building, it was in the old City Hall, and they did not have public hearings at that time. That was something that came in the late 1960s and early 1970s as a response to the activism that followed the Vietnam War. And the council...but before that, the public would have about one chance a year, I think it was, on the budget, talk about the budget, and then it was a unified school district, it was Unified School District, and so they had to have a hearing on the school budget as well, and these things would go until 3:00 in the morning, and they were pretty ugly. We have great opportunity for the public to address its government here, more than enough, and we have done a great deal more than the Wisconsin Legislature, the U.S. Congress, or you go to one of the neighboring townships where they don't have committees, they have one meeting a month, and that's it. You have to show up for that one meeting, that's your only shot at it as a constituent, and that's all they get here. We get...if you have a zoning matter, you've got to show up for the Plan Commission, JNA, the Committee of the Whole, and the council. And you saw as an example of the confusion of the public, this guy who wanted his taxi license hearing, and the shock on his face when Mr. Becker told him he had to come back tonight. He thought that he had done enough for this month and that he was going to just come back next month. He didn't realize he had to show up again tonight to make sure that his matter got through, and we've seen that so many times with people who wish for a rezoning, or they want something that they're coming back time and time again. And it's time, as Councilmember Farmer points out, to do some improvements here in how we do business. It will also require, it's not just a simple matter of changing not having a Committee of the Whole, but we're going to have to place more trust and reliance on our committees, or there will be more participation in our committees. Right now, who among us knows intimately all the details of all 70 or so pieces of legislation we have at our desk? I bet we don't. I bet we have to, for the finance stuff, we turn to the members of the Finance Committee for guidance, if we're concerned about them. If, you know, it...already we're heading that way, it's time to do it, and it gives respect to our committees, it gives respect, more importantly, yet to the public that relies on us and is confused by the way we do business. I hope you do not ask for a referral.
Chair recognizes a council member from the 3rd District.
Thank you, Your Honor. In putting in the sunset clause, I did that because I think this is not the way we should be doing business, and the sunset clause would make it easier to repeal it and go back to the way that we were. Taking away the public's voice is not a good thing. Not everybody in this room goes to both committee meetings, the JNA and the FNP. We don't have a chance to hear what the public wants to say. It's...in the long run, if you're going to do your jobs correctly, you need to get to both meetings, so that you can hear the public speak and make a decision, rather than coming into the council, getting five signatures, and hearing for the first time on what the public has to say, and then make a decision. Should the committees be doing their work? Yes, they should. But should we, as a group, also be able to hear what the public has to say? I think that we do, and then take the two days to make our decision. I think we need to send this back. I hope that we would vote for a referral. Thank you.
Chair recognizes a council member from the 17th District.
Thank you, Your Honor. I totally agree with Councilmember Farmer and my friend from the 8th. I would be totally opposed to going back to status quo. However, that being said, I was really intrigued with the notion that Councilmember Manninger brought forward, and I don't know how that gets the light of day. I mean, it's...I'm hearing that we have a so-called law on the books that's going to require two-thirds vote to modify. So, I don't know how we get from reconsideration to essentially having a discussion about options other than, because I...if this is something that's viewed as a way of sort of keeping what we have, I'm not there. I really think I agree with Mr. Farmer. This is an important move in a direction that's way overdue, but I just think there may be another way of getting there, and I'm intrigued with what Mr. Manninger's had to say. So, can anyone help me? Can the attorney or someone? How do we get to examine that? If we're just going to refer this to JNA, does that get us there, or how do we get...
If anyone has any bright ideas at JNA and what to do with it, I suppose it will, if you give them direction at JNA. If you give them direction, what to do at JNA, you could do it that way as well. Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything additional to add?
I think the other suggestion that was being mentioned, allowed, was introducing separate legislation.
Do you wish to retain the floor?
Essentially, then, Mr. Manninger could draft legislation describing what it is he's proposing, and that would go through the way everything else goes through, rather than referring this back to JNA.
That is an option.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes a council member from the 1st District.
Thank you, Your Honor. All the more important reason to refer this back to JNA, so we can have that discussion. The public never had a chance to be heard. This was added, the five council members was added at the Committee of the Whole. There was no notification, there was nothing on the website, there was nothing other than in the Tribune at the last minute, and on your other news stations. We need to get back to suggestions on how we can make it more efficient at our committee meetings and for the Committee of the Whole. The people need to be heard. They weren't heard at the Committee of the Whole. And if you bring it back to JNA as a referral, I'll guarantee you, you will have the public. I heard from a lot of people, even at the signed committee on Wednesday, or on Tuesday, I'm sorry, afternoon, they didn't have a chance to be heard on this, and I think by bringing it back, I feel very strongly it needs to be referred, and I think you'll have the input then. Just come up with these ideas, but get it referred, and then we can come up with new legislation if need be. Thank you.
Chair recognizes a council member from the 7th District.
Thank you. I feel I bring a unique perspective to this council in being the newest member of it, having been on the other side of the divide here, having to go before the Planning Board and JNA, and then the Council of the Whole, and finally, the real vote at the common council meeting. From a citizen's standpoint, it's good to be heard and necessary, but the Council of the Whole really had the appearance of being a dress rehearsal for tonight's meeting. You got to see what way people voted, and you could lobby them to change their mind. I think it's very important for the public to be heard. I'm not certain the retention of the Council of the Whole, the way it's existed, is valid. Mr. Manninger proposed having a public hearing prior to the common council meeting for a last chance for the public to be heard before we place our real votes on things. I think that is a sound suggestion, and I'm more than willing to revisit that. Thank you.
Chair recognizes a council member from the 4th District.
Thank you. I'd like to try to bring this discussion back around to Mr. Farmer's point, that this was properly noticed and on our agenda in recent months to eliminate the public hearing, not to eliminate Committee of the Whole, but to eliminate the public hearing from the Committee of the Whole. The public did have an opportunity to share their views on that with us, so repeating that process, I don't know how useful that would be. I do know that when I hear council members use terms like taking away the public's voice and eliminating public hearing, I'm very disappointed to hear that kind of inflammatory language come from the floor. I expect it from some members of the public, but not of the council. This has never been about taking away the public's voice. We probably have one of the most inefficient, cumbersome political processes of any municipality in the Western world. People have been trying to change it for years without success. This is a step we can take in the right direction. People will still be able to speak before the council. If council members will make the commitment to come to both standing committees, they will hear those members of the public. And how do you know that the public won't actually be more apt to participate when we make it a little bit simpler and easy for them to come to us and speak? I hope you'll support this and give it a try for six months. If it doesn't work out, we'll go back to doing things the way we are now.
Chair recognizes a council member from the 14th District. Thank you. I'm not necessarily opposed to referring this, I just question for the City Attorney, what about making amendments? Is that something that can be done tonight, and is that something that needs a supermajority?
Mr. City Attorney?
Your question is whether you can make an amendment tonight? After reconsideration, you can, the main motion is before you, and you are able to make amendments on that motion.
The plan motion, would that pass? Would you change that?
The main motion to adopt the legislation, which is to change the rules, the ultimate main motion requires a supermajority vote.
Chair, recognize the council member from the 9th District.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I like the idea that Councilmember Manninger is proposing. I'm kinda perplexed like Mr. Swans is that we can't get this done tonight to do the Manninger Plan. But if that's the way we get the Manninger Plan done is by in separate legislation, I'll go for that. I agree with Councilmember Swans here that a thirty-day referral is not the right way to go, but for lack of a better situation here, I think separate legislation to do the Manninger Plan is the right way to go. And also, on Tuesday night, we had the Steve Gores from the Citizens of Responsible Government, and he told us that he supports eliminating the Committee of the Whole, but he wants public hearings on Thursday night. With the Manninger Plan, that does this. So if Councilmember Manninger decides to introduce legislation to do his plan, I will support that. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on referral? The Chair recognizes a council member from the 15th District.
And I would like to basically repeat that. I'd like what Councilmember Manninger is suggesting. Sometimes things get lost in the translation. Our problem is not public hearings. In my opinion, our problem is the Committee of the Whole, which is redundant. And however we get to that point, if a referral gets us to that point of perhaps not having a Committee of the Whole eventually, but having public hearings before the council, and if new legislation is what's required, I'll publicly say I will support Mr. Manninger and co-sponsor it if he wishes to do that. But however we get there, I think is important for us to do it.
Is there further discussion on referral? We have a motion on the floor as to refer for thirty days. If there is no other discussion, please cast your votes. Waiting for one vote.
Six, yeses, one, three, six, twelve, fifteen, and seventeen.
Motion is failed. What is the pleasure of the council? The Chair recognizes a council member from the 15th District.
I wanted to support Mr. Manninger's reconsideration. Was I supposed to vote yes or no?
You would have voted yes to support reconsideration, or to support referral, excuse me. We have voted, we have voted on reconsideration, that's why we're discussing it. The Chair recognizes a council member from the 1st District.
I really think you need to give this a lot of thought, so I will postpone this for thirty days until we can come up with a plan.
I don't know if that's a motion of Mr., I believe that's the same motion that was just on the floor. If there's...
[inaudible]
Okay, are you asking for a special meeting?
A thirty-day, postpone for thirty days for a special meeting would be appropriate. We need to have more discussion by the public, and that's what we're here for. We represent the public. We keep forgetting that. We make our phone calls, you make your contacts, but we forget about the people. The people is who we represent, and they have a right to be heard on this. So I can postpone this indefinitely, then it kills it. That's not the agenda here. I want to postpone it to a special date, and I can do that.
Is there a second for that motion? All right. Motion is to postpone this for thirty days? Okay. If there's no discussion, Chair recognizes a council member from the 9th District. We did get a second from the council member from the 6th District. Okay. Could you clarify that motion? Are you postponing it to a special meeting? And do you want to set the time of that?
The next, I can postpone it according to Robert's Rules of Order to the next scheduled session. So...
Okay. We'll hear the city's attorney opinion on this. Mr. City Attorney?
I just want to make sure that the minutes properly reflect the motion being made. So what I'm hearing you say is that your motion to postpone definitely is to the next council meeting, therefore bypassing all the committee meetings, the subcommittee meetings of the council, going right to the next council meeting. So this will not be considered until this exact time next month in this exact type of same forum, as opposed to asking for a special meeting that is specifically thirty days out on this sole agenda topic.
I guess my intent is to postpone it to the next session. Session would include the first JNA meeting, and then it would go through those other channels, correct?
The motion to refer and the motion to commit is the one that sends it to the subunits. That one had failed.
Right.
The motion postponed indefinitely, then, as I understand you stating, would be, it's not specifically thirty days, but rather to the next regular council meeting, which therefore bypasses JNA, bypasses Committee of the Whole, and it's just placed on the next common council agenda.
That is not my intent. I want it the next scheduled sessions, which would be the JNA.
Then that would be the same thing as a referral, which was just voted down then.
Postpone, though, is different than a referral. It's postponing, Robert's Rule of Order. I have the floor, Mr. Farmer. Thank you.
[inaudible]
Excuse me?
Chair, recognize the council member from the 10th District.
The motion is framed, is not in order before the council. It is, as Stefan Matty has just revealed, it is exactly the same as the motion we voted down. I ask the chair to either rule it out of order, or I will appeal the decision of the chair to the body of the whole.
Well, I'll allow the council member from the 1st District to explain what you would like to do, but I agree with the City Attorney that if you want this to go to the subcommittee meetings, that's a motion to refer, which was just made and was failed. If you want to postpone it and skip the subcommittee meetings, I'll recognize that motion. If we get a second for it.
There needs to be more discussion. And I have read Robert's Rules of Order. You can postpone to a future session. Now, whether it's the Committee of the Whole or the JNA, why couldn't we have a special JNA meeting the same night as the Committee of the Whole for the discussion to take place? By then, we would have someone come up with some ideas on how we can move forward in a more efficient, efficient, capitalize that, process. There is nothing wrong with postponing this to the next Committee of the Whole evening with a special meeting of the JNA.
We'll hear the City Attorney's opinion on that.
The opinion of the legal department is that if you wish to do a postpone to a definite period of time, there's two ways that that can occur. The first way, and you have to distinguish it from a motion to reconsider, which is, I mean, a motion to refer. The motion to refer sends it through all the subunits of the Common Council. Therefore, a motion to postpone definitely puts it to a specific meeting. That specific meeting would be the next common council meeting if the thirty days is referenced to mean specifically the next session. The next session of the actual common council meeting would be whatever that date is in the next month for the actual, regular common council meeting. The other option for the postpone definitely is if you take the postponement for thirty days literally, meaning that whatever day thirty is from today, that would be a special common council meeting on this specific topic.
So can she postpone it to a special subcommittee meeting?
In the opinion of the legal department, you have the jurisdiction right now is in the common council. If you can, if you want to refer it, that would be a referral or a commitment. That's the same motion that sends it to a different committee. You could create a separate or a new committee to send it to, but in that case, that motion has already failed. And the postponement indefinitely, or postpone it definitely keeps it in the same governing body, which is the common council.
All right. Well, you can postpone this to the next council meeting, but you cannot postpone it to a committee meeting.
So I can't do it indefinitely. I have to have a specific date. Is that correct, Mr. Matty? Postpone indefinitely means I'm gonna kill it, and that's not my intent.
It's correct. A postpone indefinite is a motion to kill the legislation. In this case, what I heard you say was a postpone for thirty days, and that's why I had asked the question whether you were asking for a specific common council meeting specifically thirty days from today's date, or whether the thirty-day reference was merely meant to the next regular common council meeting where it may or may not be exactly thirty days away.
Then I'll postpone it to the next council meeting for a special session. Thank you.
Is there a second for that? All right. Motion on the floor is to postpone this to the next common council meetings. Everybody will skip any subcommittee meetings and go straight to this common council meeting. Is there discussion on the motion to postpone? If there is none, would you like to speak on the motion to postpone?
The City Attorney took care of everything I wanted to say. It is the practice around here. When you postpone, it goes to the next regular meeting. It doesn't happen very often, but in the last two years, we did have one that was postponed, and it went to the regular council meeting, not to the standing committees. Thank you.
All right. Motion on the floor is to postpone for thirty days. The Chair recognizes a council member from the 17th District.
If we do this, would that prohibit, and I don't know if he wants to do this or not, but if Mr. Manninger wanted to write something up and have it read in, it couldn't be read. It'd be done tonight, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
I'm still trying to figure out how his idea gets the light of day. Is that foolish for me to think it's even possible for his idea to get the light of day?
Well, I mean, it can get the light of day at any point. He could write up a caption tonight and, you know, read it in at the end of the meeting. You know, if this is postponed for thirty days, he can, you know, come up with an amendment to this at the next meeting to change it. You know, he can kill this. He can write up new legislation. There are any number of options.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes the council president.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that in relation to that particular motion, if it's referred to a council meeting, there is no, or postponed to the next council meeting, there will be no public hearings in relation to it. So the purpose of the motion, which I understand the purpose to be is to have public input, then it just isn't going to work.
The Chair recognizes a council member from the 1st District.
Thank you. In response to that, we have had public hearings at council meetings. I know there's a few here that don't like extra meetings, but we have had reference to a special meeting, and we can make a vote to have the public be heard that evening. You know, I guess I would have preferred it to go to the Committee of the Whole, but if that is what our attorney said could not be done, then it certainly, you know, is appropriate at the council meeting, but I'm hoping to have a special meeting before. Let me remind you, how many short circuits were there this month? Three. We had short, three short circuits on development agreements and a TIF. So who's to say Councilmember Manninger couldn't come up with a short circuit? I think all you need is, what, five signatures? So, you know, if you've got some ideas, put them together, but I think this is, talk about the light of day. I think we've turned the lights off, unfortunately. Thank you.
My motion on the floor is to postpone this to the next regular meeting of the common council. The Chair recognizes a council member from the 8th District.
Well, if you pay attention to the timing, if Councilmember Manninger would like, he may introduce something in the November session. It'll be acted on in December, and this whole new plan wasn't to take effect until January anyhow. So he's got plenty of time to bring in something new.
Is there further discussion? If there is no further discussion on this motion to postpone to the next regular meeting of the common council, please cast your votes. Yes, we'll postpone this to the next regular meeting of the common council. A no vote will not.
One, three, six, and fifteen.
Motion is failed. What is the pleasure of the council in regard to this item? The Chair recognizes a council member from the 1st District.
That should have been taken.
The Chair recognizes a council member from the 14th District.
I'll move to amend the legislation, removing the five signatures requirement and include public hearing on all items, beginning at each regular city council meeting monthly, with no council debate or vote. Following the public hearings, we would then begin our regular monthly city council meeting as scheduled.
All right. Motion on the floor is to amend, to allow a public hearing for all items on the agenda. Is there discussion on the motion? If there is none, Chair recognizes a council member from the 10th District.
Hopefully, it takes two-thirds ultimately for that to pass. I think that's putting an awful lot on Thursday night, Mr. Manninger. I realize everybody wants to accommodate you here, but I have been here when public hearings took us to two in the morning, and we began our regular Committee of the Whole then, and that's one of the reasons it was on a separate night. Public hearings have been kind of light as of late by comparison, but Mr. Seck was also here reporting on these meetings when we used to routinely run on Tuesday night to two to three in the morning. And if that ever were to, that just makes it to where you're then doing the important stuff when you can hardly stay awake.
Chair, recognize the council member from the 9th District.
Thank you, Your Honor. What Councilmember Manninger is proposing is public hearing only. There would be no discussion among the council members, except obviously questions for the speakers. There would be, there would also be no votes. So if you look at, in one hour's time, conceivably, and each person gets three minutes, conceivably, you could get through twenty speakers. I don't think that this is gonna, this is gonna put us in the wee hours of the morning. At the most, I could see this will make our visit on the second Thursday of the month, the regular meeting night, maybe an hour extra. So I still think this is a great plan, so I'm gonna vote for the amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Councilmember from the 17th District, would you like to speak on the amendment?
Just to clarify, Your Honor, it's my understanding, then, of Mr. Manninger's proposal that the council would not go through every item on the so-called Committee of the Whole agenda. The only things that would be dealt with in those public hearings are the items that people wish to speak to. And beyond that, when they're finished, we would go into a council meeting. Did you think at all, Paul, about maybe starting this up thirty minutes earlier, starting our council meetings at seven o'clock, or starting our public hearings at seven o'clock?
Mr. Councilmember from the 14th District, would you like to respond?
I think that would make sense, to start at seven o'clock. Seven, seven thirty, I still think that's a reasonable hour. And then if it takes an extra hour, you're only going a half hour longer. And again, that because we wouldn't be voting or addressing everything in the Committee of the Whole, it would keep the public hearings but reduce the redundancy. So it would essentially be like the Committee of the Whole, just a little flip-flop.
The Chair recognizes a council member from the 7th District.
Thank you. I would respectfully...
I would respectfully request that the timeframe of this coming into effect and its sunsetting to parallel the sunset of the suspension of the council of the whole meeting. So this would be effective from the January session through the June session, if I remember correctly, our experiment on the suspension of the council of the whole for this special listening session prior to the common council meetings.
Well, if there's no objection, the chair will rule that that is part of the motion, because that is part of the original legislation. I've seen no objection. That will sunset, this amendment will sunset as originally intended by this legislation as it was adopted last month. The chair recognizes a council member from the fifteenth district.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, I thought Mr. Mettinger said this, but I wanted to be sure. So if this plan follows through with, obviously, the sunset, there would not be a committee of the whole meeting on Tuesdays? Essentially, there'd be public hearings, and then a council meeting on Thursday?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Is there other discussion on the motion to amend on the floor? The chair recognizes a council member from the ninth district.
So we don't have the argument after the vote to pass the Mettinger amendment? Is that a majority vote or a two-thirds vote?
This is a majority vote, and the ultimate adoption of this will require a two-thirds majority. This amendment requires a simple majority, but the final approval will require a two-thirds majority. All right, if there is no other discussion on the motion to amend, please cast your votes.
Four, eight, and ten.
The motion is carried. Is there further discussion on this legislation as it has been amended? The chair recognizes a council member from the tenth district.
Well, I'm just going to make the plea that I think what we did last month has value, and that we would give it a try. Mr. Mettinger's thing, proposal is certainly an alternative. And if what we find, if he's right, or Mrs. Richmond is right, and it doesn't work, by goodness, in February or March, we could institute Mr. Mettinger's alternative plan. We don't have to wait till June, June's just an automatic date. But I think what we did was good. And it puts us, we still have more public hearings than probably any other municipality in the state of Wisconsin, even if we leave this as we left it last month. So I hope that we'll stick with that. It is worthy of a try. I'm nearing the end of my tenure here, so I don't have a lot of skin in this game. Those of you who are gonna be here for a good, some of you will be here for ten or fifteen years. And so I think in the end, you'll want very much for us to have at least tried this, and if it's found wanting, then we can change it. Not trying, leave what we placed last month.
All right, a motion on the floor is to adopt this resolution as it has been amended. And just to clarify, Mr. City Attorney, if this is not, if this is not passed tonight, what's the outcome? Does the outcome from last month still stand?
With a motion to reconsider, the legislation is brought back as if it had not been adopted. So if the motion here fails, then the entire legislation fails.
Chair recognizes a council member from the tenth district.
Are you saying, then, that by reconsideration, a simple majority vote, he does a two-thirds vote last month?
Yes.
Doesn't it take two-thirds to change a rule?
Takes two-thirds to change a rule.
Didn't we pass a rule last month?
But you also adopted a reconsideration. You have in your rules the option to do a reconsideration.
Right, but wouldn't it take two-thirds, then, to change the rule under reconsideration? Because this is substantially different. This is very different now than from what we adopted last month. We should, this certainly would take two-thirds to adopt, it's completely different legislation now.
The opinion of the legal department, according to your rules, is that you have the ability to reconsider any previous legislation by majority vote.
I would agree.
And in this particular circumstance, that's what happened. There was a majority vote to reconsider the previous legislation.
I agree.
And what would happen, then, is if, under the opinion of the legal department, we don't have the final say in this. The chair would have to make a ruling. If you disagree with the ruling from the chair, then you have the ability to do a motion to appeal that ruling, to determine ultimately what the rule is for this body.
But you see the conundrum here, because his amendment makes it substantially new legislation, a new rule, and you're now putting, your ruling is saying that a mere majority adopts the rule, that later can only be repealed by two-thirds, it doesn't make sense.
I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, too, I have to live by the rules that this body creates, and I have to interpret them based on the rules and the precedent that you've established in the past. I can give an opinion, and then ultimately, the chair, the presiding officer, can decide whether to follow that opinion or give a different ruling. And if the body does not like the ultimate ruling from the chair, you have the motion to appeal, to establish the definitive process and precedence for this body.
Well, I don't want to get into a fight here, I just find it incongruous, there's a word for you, that we're now changing a rule by simple majority vote.
I understand what you're saying, I agree, I don't want to get in an argument with you, I'm just giving the opinion of the legal department.
And we're instituting a brand-new rule, never before considered, never, ever having had a public hearing, ever, anywhere, and we're gonna do it on simple majority vote. This is something only Mrs. Richmond could have dreamed up.
All right, Mr. Councilmember from the third district, would you like to speak on a motion?
Thank you, your honor. You know, I think the main goal of the people that were in opposition was to keep the public's voice there. And I think that this does do that. And it's still under a six-month sunset clause, which at that point, you can decide that it works or it doesn't work, and you can go back to the way it was. You're keeping the voice in there of the public. I will support that, and I ask everybody else, too, to think.
All right, motion on the floor is to adopt this resolution as it has been amended. If there is no discussion, the chair recognizes a council member from the tenth district.
That's nice. I don't, I don't think this is my question, I, and I think you all see the contradictory nature of what Mr. Matty has just said. And I am desirous, I don't think what I'm gonna do here is going to pass, but I do think somewhere along the line, somebody has to say that if you're going to change a rule, it's two-thirds. You just can't backdoor it and say, because by Mr. Matty's interpretation, I could come in with a motion to rescind any rule we have next month, which is a simple majority vote, and we'd be on our way. And that's not how it works, okay? I don't know where and how he came up with this, this is why I asked about it in the very beginning, and I was definitely led to believe in the very beginning it would take two-thirds. So I'm going to ask the chair for a ruling as to whether this roll call takes two-thirds for a change in the rules, because it is a change in the rules from what we adopted last month. Then if the chair rules one way or the other, I'll probably just peel the decision of the chair to the body as a whole. I really doubt if that's going to pass, because the majority wants Mr. Mettinger's thing. And as my father used to counsel me, the majority gets to do the damn well what they want. It's regrettable. And that's the purpose of the rules, is to keep the majority in check. But I really don't think this watershed moment should occur without at least some kind of protest. So I'm going to ask the chair for a ruling.
Well, my ruling is that if this receives a two-thirds majority vote, obviously, the resolution will be adopted as it has been amended. If it does not receive the two-thirds majority, it will not be adopted. That's correct, that's correct. The chair recognizes a council member from the first district.
So, your honor, what you're saying is you're disagreeing with what our city attorney just said?
No.
Pardon me?
No, my ruling is that I agree with the opinion of the city attorney.
As he stated, the majority?
That's correct.
Okay, 'cause I heard you say two-thirds, so.
That's correct, it will require a two-thirds vote to adopt if it does not receive.
I heard him say something about the majority vote, not two-thirds.
The majority vote allowed you to reconsider this item.
We already reconsidered it.
That's correct. Okay, the chair recognizes a council member from the tenth.
I want to point this out, we can't afford public hearings on Thursday night. We can't handle a simple rule change in an hour's time. You know, we're not even done here. The, you're saying that if there isn't an affirmative vote on this rule change of two-thirds, it does not pass?
That's correct.
And then my next question would be, I would interpret that, then the rule most recently passed would still be in effect, because the legislation to alter it failed. It would be like any other change. If you came in with a rule change to make it that we're gonna meet on the fifth Wednesday of the month, it might get fifty percent, but it didn't get two-thirds. So thus, it failed, and you're still meeting on whatever Thursday of the month it would be.
Well, my ruling is that if this does not receive a two-thirds majority vote, that we don't have the legislation that was adopted last month.
We what?
That's correct, we do not have it, that it is not in.
I see, okay. Well, then, I'm going to, I'm going to appeal the decision of the chair to the body of the whole. I fully expect that to fail, but I really find it outrageous that we're now amending rules with fifty percent.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to appeal the ruling of the chair on this item. As many as are in favor of the ruling of the chair, you'll vote yes. If you are not in favor of the ruling of the chair, you'll vote no. Chair recognizes the council president.
Thank you. I, we sure have got ourselves into a conundrum here tonight. And I think, and I think that everybody really has the best intent here. We're just struggling with how to get to where we really need to be. And what troubles me about it is that what's happening is we're trying to create legislation on the run, which is kind of how the whole thing happened in the first case, where the idea that the committee of the whole be abolished came about somewhat in that way also. It seems to me, and I just, I really just don't know how to get there, but I believe that we are sincere in wanting to give the public the opportunity to participate in the process. But by killing the original legislation, we are not, we're not achieving anything. We are back to square one. It has happened in an ornery way. And I still believe that we all want the best, and we want the public to be able to participate in discussion. What's really, we're struggling with now is because of the confusion or in relation to the two, three-fifths or four-fifths and majority, that we have, we have really kind of slid into a situation that isn't good in any case, because at this stage, it's very clear that there is a sentiment that the public should have the opportunity to participate in public hearings. That has been my position all the way along the line, that they should. But adopting a change on the fly, which is basically what we're doing, is not helping the whole situation particularly either. We've run into challenges with our own rules because of the way that, there's a quirk there. I wish I had a solution as to how to salvage this, that we do not have the full legislation die, and at the same time, have an opportunity for the public to have input, and for all of us to really seriously consider what would be the best thing to do. Clearly, we need, we need legislation, new legislation in relation to public hearings. How we get there has been awfully, awfully messy. And I don't know whether even, whether there is any way of mending it tonight. We've got ourselves into such a quagmire here. Basically, as I understand it now, either we vote to have the, yeah, I'm even confused at this stage. If we vote yes or no, simple majority on this, what, where are we at? Yeah, we're going to get the new rule. If we don't vote fifty, so that changes the rule. I don't know. It's just somehow, it would, if we could, at this stage, I really think that we do need a referral on it. But can we do the referral? Can we do the referral and keep the existing legislation alive?
Well, right now, we're considering an appeal of the ruling of the chair, so is there any further discussion on the appeal of the ruling of the chair? The chair recognizes a council member from the seventeenth district.
Thank you, your honor. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding your position. Because on the one hand, I thought I heard you say you agreed with the city attorney, but on the other hand, I thought I heard you say it would not pass by a two-thirds majority. So a two-thirds majority, if you're requiring that, and I personally don't have a big problem with it, but if you're requiring that, that's not the same thing as the attorney said, I don't believe.
That is the same thing that the attorney said, and we can hear from him. The attorney ruled that to reconsider, it takes a simple majority vote, but it still requires a two-thirds majority vote to ultimately adopt. So council member Farmer is right, that in effect, you are changing a council rule with a simple majority vote, but, you know, our rules as they're currently writ, I, you know, agree with the opinion of the city attorney, allow us to do that. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, would you like to offer an opinion on this?
What's the question?
Well, the council member from the seventeenth district would like you to confirm that my ruling is in accordance with your opinion, that this requires a two-thirds majority vote to be adopted. If it does not receive a two-thirds majority vote, this legislation is dead at that point.
The opinion of the legal department was that after you had reconsidered the legislation, the legislation was back before you, therefore, it was no longer effective in its primary form. That was the essence of a reconsideration. Therefore, if you did get this two-third supermajority, then the legislation as currently amended tonight would be effective. If you did not obtain the two-third supermajority, you would not have, you would not be able to go back to what was there previously in the previous month, to the step, to the rule prior to any, the legislation currently at issue being introduced.
And I concur with that opinion.
Agree, I don't agree with Mr. Matty's interpretation, but at least there's a thread of logic there. I don't agree with it. I will, if Mrs. Richmond wants to refer, point out that this now would be eligible for referral, because it is substantially different legislation because of Mr. Mettinger's amendment. And so if she really wanted to refer it, there's your golden opening.
The chair recognizes a council member from the fourteenth district. And if there is no objection, I'll remove the appeal from the floor. I've seen no objection, the appeal is removed from the floor. The chair recognizes a council member from the fourteenth district.
Thank you, I just wanted to point it out, unless we were all planning to not sign petitions for people to speak, this really isn't gonna change anything from what we had, except it's gonna take the burden off the public from having to get the five signatures. And we have heard from the public over the past month. So unless we were all planning to not sign those, or not give our signatures, this is not gonna be a drastic change. Thank you.
The chair recognizes a council member from the first district.
This is my golden opportunity, your honor. I would like to refer this to the next council cycle.
Motion on the floor is to refer this for thirty days to the next council cycle. If there is no discussion on referral, the chair recognizes a council member from the ninth district.
Your honor, question for the city attorney, is the referral, is the referral in order here? Thank you.
Is there other discussion on the motion on the floor? Is there other discussion on the motion on the floor to refer for thirty days? If there is no discussion, please cast your votes.
Four, five, nine, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
The motion is carried. All right, on to the second item on the agenda. Chair recognizes a council member from the seventeenth district.
There's no reason for other council members to be aware of this, but I am very aware of the fact that whenever I introduce these agendas, we start off with a real roaring, I mean, this happens more often when I do this, so I think we ought to change something here, but that'd be the case. So is number three then something we are considering, your honor?
That's the prerogative of this council here, what is the pleasure, if you could read the caption for us first?
It's a resolution amending council rules five regarding standing committees.
What is the pleasure of the council? Is that for thirty days? I'm sorry? All right, well, in order to refer this, you will first need to reconsider. Motion on the floor is to reconsider, if there is no discussion, please cast your votes.
Five, no.
Eight, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and sixteen.
Is that for thirty days? All right, motion on the floor is to refer for thirty days, if there is no discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is carried, council member from the seventeenth district.
Thank you, your honor. Number four, we have the twenty-twelve bills paid in October, and number five, estimates paid in October.
What's the pleasure of the council, if there is no discussion, please cast your votes, motion on the floor is to adopt. Motion is carried, chair recognizes a council member from the sixteenth district.
I have number six, appointments by the mayor, Board of Electrical Examiners, David Stokes, twelve-twenty-five Siler Lane, International Committee, Soji Chang, twelve-twenty-four Pine Street on Alaska, Diane Withers, nineteen-twenty-nine, one-nineteen-twenty-fourth Street North, Redevelopment Authority, four-fifth vote required, Stephen Loomis, twenty-three-oh-nine Kane Street.
All right, there's a request for a separate roll call on item six for the last one, so first we will take the appointment to the Redevelopment Authority, if there is no discussion on the appointment to the Redevelopment Authority, please cast your votes on that appointment. Nope, this is on the last one, the appointment to the Redevelopment Authority. Okay, you can just, you can just vote the way that you want. It does not need to clear. Well, the clerk here says that it is changing. We're still waiting for two votes.
Five guesses, three, six, ten, eleven.
Thirteen, number seven and nine abstained.
All right, the motion has failed. Okay, is there any objection to allowing the council president to be marked as a no vote? I'm sorry? That is correct. Okay, if there's no objection, please allow the council members from the tenth and eleventh district to be marked as a no vote. That's for the last one only, the Redevelopment Authority. All right, if there's no objection, council members from the tenth, eleventh, and thirteenth will be marked as a no vote. And the third district, is there any objection to tenth, eleventh, thirteenth, and third district? There's no objection, those members will be marked as a no vote, motion has failed. All right, please cast your votes on the appointments prior to that, on the Board of Electrical Examiners, the International Committee.
Speaking now.
That's it. On the remainder of the appointments, please cast your votes. Motion is carried.
Okay, ordinances recommended for adoption, number seven, an ordinance to amend subsection eight point oh-two parent N of the Code of Ordinances of the City of La Crosse regarding refuse container lids.
Is there discussion on this item? Chair recognizes a council member from the eighth district.
If you're for the City of La Crosse, if you're for cleaning up the City of La Crosse, you will vote no on this, that there's been great deal of deliberation and thought put into having lids on containers and cleaning up this city, vote no.
Chair recognizes council president.
I can't let this one go. We, I fully want to see the City of La Crosse cleaned up, however, that we are working on a new contract, every container is going to have lids, they're going to be substantial containers, and putting, it's just one token of listening to the public and not putting them through the mill just for the sake of a lid on their container. If they would just keep their garbage tidy, that would be great, thank you.
Chair recognizes a council member from the fifth district.
Thank you, I guess I have a question more about this, now, when residents do not have a trash can on their, trash lid on their cans, are they notified or given a warning before they're given a fine? Is there any sort of process for that?
Mr. Public Works Director?
If there is a fine levied, it would be one hundred dollars plus the cost for processing. We're not necessarily out going down every street and stopping at every house that doesn't have lids on, they're dealing with the more serious issues of non-compliance, so they're not necessarily out strictly enforcing containers not having lids, but if a container does not have a lid, they could be susceptible to getting a citation, yes.
Chair recognizes a council member from the eighth district.
First, a question to Mr. Hexum, is it not true that our inspection department and the appropriate, and our recycling director first tried to write a, it's not a warning ticket, it's an order to correct, and, and that, how many, just, do you recall off the top of your head how many citations we have issued and this sort of thing? It's about zip, isn't it? Yes, it is, it's very few citations have been given for garbage violations, that the intent of this city, the practice of this city has been using the carrot to encourage compliance, to encourage people to do this. There are a few people who don't get the message. If you come to a board of public works meeting, well, every Monday morning, you can see photos of some people who just don't understand that you got to clean up a little bit, and they have horrible messes, and that's what this is for, that the little old lady in South Eighth Street isn't going to get fined a hundred and seventy bucks if she, if she doesn't have the lid on, she's going to be encouraged to get a lid on it. And it's about time we clean up, the problems, if you don't, haven't been paying attention, the problems in this city of garbage are tremendous, and this is one of the steps that we have to do to get, clean up this place. There are just some people who do not understand and that they have to have Mr. Hexum put a lid on it.
Chair recognizes a council member from the sixth district.
Thank you, your honor, I'm all for having our city a clean city, but I also think it's a very hard problem to find a place that actually sells you just lids, you have to buy the whole trash can, so unless you could send out information to the general public, let people know where they can buy lids for their trash cans, or they steal them from the neighbor or something, but I mean, that's something that has to be looked at too, thank you.
Chair recognizes a council member from the tenth district.
I'm going to regret this, but Mr. Satori, you can go on the internet, Amazon, and get all the lids you want, no big deal. Also, according to the internets, you can go to Home Depot because they throw out lids there because most landscaping firms only want the can and not the lid, so it isn't, I was concerned on it, it isn't quite the problem that you think it is. Also, I remember the good old days when if you had a derelict can, the refuse people would relieve you of it and leave you a lid, and so that, that all seemed to work out real well there. Nowadays, they don't take your, your beat-up cans and, you know, they need to be retired, and they don't do that the way they used to, so unfortunately, sometimes you do end up with more cans than lids, but I would encourage the Department of Public Works to tell our refuse caller when there's a can that should be retired, it should ought to be retired.
All right, if there is no further discussion, motion on the floor is to adopt, if there's no other discussion, please cast your votes. Waiting for one vote. If there's no objection to marking the council member from the tenth district as a no vote, Ms. Clerk, please mark him as a no vote. All right, the chair recognizes a council member from the sixteenth district.
Number eight, an ordinance to create section thirteen point oh-one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of La Crosse Airport Height Overlay Zoning and Land Use Regulations.
If there is no discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is carried.
And number nine, an ordinance to amend subsection fifteen point oh-two parent B of the Code of Ordinances of the City of La Crosse, transferring certain property from the low-density multiple dwelling district to the traditional neighborhood district, allowing for commercial and residential use at four oh-four, four oh-eight, four ten, four twelve, and four fourteen Jackson Street and twelve oh-nine Fourth Street South.
If there is no discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is carried.
Number ten, an ordinance to amend subsection fifteen point oh-two parent B of the Code of Ordinances of the City of La Crosse, transferring certain property from the heavy industrial district to the planned development district general, allowing for mixed-use development incorporating both residential and commercial at six oh-six George Street, thirteen nineteen, and thirteen twenty-five St. Andrews Street.
If there's no discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is carried, the chair recognizes a council member from the fifteenth district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, number eleven, an ordinance to amend subsection fifteen point oh-two B of the Code of Ordinances of the City of La Crosse, transferring certain property from single-family residence districts to public and semi-public districts, allowing for continued use of a community garden and storage shed at nine oh-three and nine thirteen Kane Street.
If there's no discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is carried.
Number. Number twelve, ordinance to amend subsection fifteen oh-two B of the Code of Ordinances of the City of La Crosse, transferring certain property from the planned development district specific to the planned development district specific allowing for covered decks or four-season rooms to the single-family condos at forty-five hundred through forty-five eighteen Lexicon Heights Drive.
If there's no discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is carried.
Thirteen, an ordinance to repeal section fifteen point nineteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of La Crosse Airport Overlay Zoning Regulations.
If there's no discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is carried.
Number fourteen, amended ordinance to amend subsection twenty point two-seven I eight of the Code of Ordinances of the City of La Crosse regarding beer garden hours for class D licenses.
If there's no discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is carried.
And number fifteen is a report of a bid and quotes, report of bids and resolution awarding contract to four seasons landscaping and maintenance in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars for two thousand and twelve miscellaneous downtown streetscaping repairs trees.
If there's no discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is carried, the chair recognizes a council member from the fourteenth district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have number sixteen, the final report of bids and quotes recommended to be adopted, report of bids and resolution awarding contract to K and M Excavating LLC in the amount of thirty-one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for dredging of Vietnam Veterans Pond at Chad Erickson Memorial Park. Items recommended to be adopted, number seventeen, resolution granting various license applications pursuant to chapter twenty of the La Crosse Municipal Code for the license period two thousand and twelve through thirteen. Number eighteen, request of Rivoli Theater Incorporated doing business as Rivoli Theater to expand combination class B beer and liquor license at one seventeen Fourth Street North and resolution approving same. Number nineteen, resolution approving application of Catherine and William Bitner to own, keep, and/or harbor chickens at ten twenty-seven Charles Street and resolution approving same. And number twenty, resolution approving application of David Percy to own, keep, and/or harbor chickens at twenty-two forty Sunset Lane and resolution approving same, and that's all I have.
If there's no discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is carried, the chair recognizes a council member from the thirteenth district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we have items recommended to be adopted, number twenty-one, request of GCR Terror Center for a waiver of paving requirements for property located at five-hundred-third Street South and resolution approving same. Twenty-two, amended resolution rescinding nineteen ninety-five resolution relating to sublease of a garage located in Riverside Park and authorized use of the garage for storage for the City of La Crosse Park and Rec Department. Number twenty-three, resolution approving standard identity and access agreement for the police and fire departments to allow them to enter into agreements regarding rescue and training drills. And number twenty-four, continuing with items recommended to be adopted, resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding regarding transportation planning between the Minnesota Department of Transportation, the La Crosse Area Planning Committee, and the La Crosse Municipal Transit Utility. And lastly, number twenty-five, resolution approving final plat of Gunnison Lutheran Medical Center to the City of La Crosse.
If there's no discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is carried, the chair recognizes a council member from the twelfth district.
Thank you, your honor, I have more items recommended to be adopted. Number twenty-six, and this requires a two-thirds vote, resolution accepting the proposed long-range plan for city. plan for City Hall grounds and directing the Board of Public Works to prepare a final plan incorporating council member comments.
My motion on the floor is to suspend the rules for item twenty-six. If there is no discussion on the suspension of the rules, do we get a second for that?
We've got to decide what this means.
All right, the reason that this is marked as requiring a two-thirds vote by the council to suspend council rule eight, our council rules require that any legislation be submitted to the legal office and the finance office for review prior to introduction, and this resolution did not meet that requirement. It was not submitted to the legal office and the finance office for review. So in order to adopt it, you will need a two-thirds vote to suspend the rules. We have a motion to suspend the rules. Did we get a second? Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules. Mr. Councilmember from the seventeenth district, would you like to speak on the motion?
I think this would be appropriate. My question is essentially about the resolution, which says the council is accepting a plan for City Hall grounds, and I'm, has the council reviewed the plans for City Hall?
Well, we've got some people nodding their head no, but this plan should have been submitted when this was introduced last month.
My concern is, Board of Public Works has put a hold on some things, because we felt, I think correctly so, that the final plan for this, for this building and the appearance of it outside would be something the council would want to vote on. And you, the council's not seen it, right, or not?
Mr. Public Works Director, did you present this to the council in their packets?
I believe that the phased approach was part of the resolution as submitted, and the poster that it was sitting up behind me on the board was the adopted plan by the Board of Public Works. There were no comments Tuesday night at Committee of the Whole.
All right, so what you've got before you is a plan, a landscaping plan for City Hall. They're going to do some renovations under this proposed plan to the east of the building, to the north of the building, and the south, actually, on all four sides of the building, in a phased project. Chair recognizes council member from the first district.
I happened to be at HPU the other day, and I had seen the plan, and I know Councilmember Farmer is the one that really said it at the last Committee of the Whole. He wanted to see a plan with landscaping and so on, and I don't believe that that was very well presented, and that's probably why there was no questions at the Committee of the Whole meeting, but I think we definitely have to make sure all the council members are aware of how that change will be, and maybe it needs to be referred. I always liked that word, so.
All right, well, right now, we've got a motion on the floor to suspend the rules. Is there further discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? The Chair recognizes council member from the fifteenth district.
I wanted to address the resolution. Should I wait till after the suspension, or is this?
Yes, please.
Okay.
All right, motion to suspend the rules. Is there any further discussion? Chair recognizes council member from the ninth district.
Suspension of the rules is a non-debatable item.
Okay, well, please cast your votes. Still waiting for two votes. Still waiting for one vote. All right, the motion is carried. The Chair recognizes council member from the fifteenth district.
I mentioned that with my limited computer skills, I can read this whole plan on our, on, on the website, so we've had a chance to look at it.
Is there any further discussion on this City Hall grounds and building plan? If there is none, this item is recommended to be adopted. There's no further discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is carried. And the Chair recognizes council member from the twelfth district.
Number twenty-seven, resolution approving the second amendment to the airport lease between the City of La Crosse and AVCAP Corporation representing the Civil Air Patrol. Twenty-eight, resolution authorizing the acquisition of property interest for the Thirty-third Street South Reconstruction Project from Brentwood Place to Solaris Lane in appropriation of funds. Twenty-nine, resolution authorizing the acquisition of property interest for the Oak Street Reconstruction Project from Palace Street to Enterprise Avenue in appropriation of funds. Number.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, this one requires two-thirds, so maybe we should just.
Okay, items twenty-seven through twenty-nine, is there any discussion? If there is none, please cast your votes. Still waiting for one vote. Motion is carried. Councilmember from the twelfth district.
Number thirty, resolution designating the east-west alley between Winnebago Street and Mississippi Street from Twentieth Street to a north-south alley as a street named Winnebago Court.
It's the pleasure of the council. Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules. Please cast your votes. Waiting for one vote. Motion is carried. Motion on the floor is to adopt. If there is no discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is carried. Chair recognizes the council president.
Sorry, my neighbors are distracting me. Number thirty-one, items recommended to be adopted, resolution in support of the Green Tier Charter for legacy communities. Number thirty-two, amended resolution approving sustainable building policy for newly constructed public buildings and retrofits for existing public buildings. Number thirty-three, resolution authorizing the preparation of a request for proposals, notice to contractors, and advertising for proposals for refuse and recycling services for the City of La Crosse to begin January one twenty thirteen. And thirty-four, resolution authorizing negotiations for a possible development agreement with Riverside Center, and that requires a two-thirds vote. And also, the resolution number thirty-five, authorizing city officials to enter into discussions regarding partnerships, opportunities with train company regarding renovation of Plant Seven, also two-thirds.
Okay, items thirty-one and thirty-two, is there any discussion? If there is none, please cast your votes, items thirty-one and thirty-two. The motion is carried. Item thirty-four, Chair recognizes council member from the ninth district.
Your honor, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules on number thirty-four.
Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules. Please cast your votes. Motion is carried. Item thirty-five, it's the pleasure of the council. Oh, excuse me, it's the pleasure of the council. The motion on the floor is to adopt. Mr. Councilmember from the ninth district, this is item thirty-four, yes. If there's no discussion, the motion on the floor is to adopt. Please cast your votes. The motion is carried. Item thirty-five, it's the pleasure of the council. Okay, Ms. Clerk, please mark the council member from the ninth district as present. We have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules. Please cast your votes on the suspension of rules, item thirty-five. Motion is carried. The motion on the floor is to adopt. If there is no discussion. Councilmember from the ninth will be marked as present. If there's no further discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is carried. And item thirty-three, Ms. Council President, would you please preside over a discussion on item thirty-three?
Thank you. Item number thirty-three has been read. What's your pleasure? Mr. Becker, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Question for the Public Works Director. I see in the resolution for yard waste, it says residential curbside collection of yard waste using a wheeled cart for automated collection, what the cost for collection and disposal, direct build to the waste generator based on the cart size. Mr. Hexum, could you tell us how, how the billing system would work on this?
Under the proposal, the resident requesting residential curbside collection of yard waste would request a, an additional cart, and they would bill, build based on the cart size.
What, what would happen if, if the resident does not request one of those carts?
They would not have residential curbside collection of yard waste.
Okay, thank you. I guess I really have a little problem with this. You know, we, the city, should encourage people to pick up yard waste. Now, what we're going to do here, starting in January first, ninth, or twenty fourteen, we're going to penalize them. So it's going to take away the incentive for people wanting to pick up their yard waste and, and put it in the proper container. Now they're going to get billed for it. I also see coming down the line, if you've got a neighbor that does, doesn't want to pay for one of these, he'll go and dump the yard waste probably on his neighbors. I'm, I'm going to vote no on this. I, I think the, we have our priorities mixed up here. We should encourage people to pick up yard waste, but not bill them for it. So I'm going to be voting no on this. Thank you.
If I might add a clarification in relation to, to this, I believe that the committee that's working on developing the request for proposals is looking to bid a variety of options, which, that would be one of them, so that when the bids come in, we can look at the, the cost of the various particular services that would be provided in relation to refuse. And at that stage, I believe it'll come back to the council to have the opportunity to decide whether it, we will know what the cost of each of the services would do, would be. Mr. Hexum could, or Mr. Happel could probably explain it better than I'm doing, but, so that basically, there'd be a menu of services that ultimately will have to be sorted out by Public Works, I presume, and come with a recommendation to council. But there will be, if I'm correct, a variety of options, and the ability, part of the importance of this will be to be able to show what the estimated cost per different type of service would be for the various services. I happen to agree with you, Mr. Becker, but I, I think it would still be good for us to know what it would cost the taxpayers for that service, too. Mr. Hexum?
The council president is correct. You're not necessarily approving or accepting anything. All you're doing is authorizing, putting together a request for proposal, basically a bid spec that the haulers would respond to, and after those are received on or about March of two thousand thirteen, those proposals, those bids were, which would lay out all of the cost for the services, would come back to this body after having been reviewed by Board of Public Works, HPU Committee, presuming it's still around, and a recommendation would be made at that time for what will the services and what those costs would be for implementation in two thousand fourteen. All you're authorizing tonight is putting together a request for proposal that would lay out all of the costs when the costs are received.
Seeing no additional, oh, yes, Mr. Richmond.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I guess I was here at HPU, listened to a little bit of, of it, but I did receive some calls on this. There is a lot of confusion. I, I think some of the seniors are very concerned that they're going to have to pay extra for all these little services that we're going to send out a proposal for, and I'm wondering what, what the taxes are going to be used for. Your intent is to have separate billing for the residences, if they have garbage pickup and leaf pickup and so on? I mean, I thought that's what our taxes would go for. I guess you need to explain this a little bit before you send it out for proposals.
Mr. Hexum, and then Mr. Happel, and Mr. Scherf.
The question of funding is a decision that this council will make. Again, this request for proposal will simply receive from the haulers what those costs will be. How this body elects to fund those costs for refuse collection is the decision of this council and not the decision of Public Works.
And this out, are we, are we set on the, the idea that we're going to go to these big containers, big, small, whatever? Or are we going to have a choice as a council? Being that, you know, we have a lot of people that won't be able to bring those larger containers back and forth from the curb. So there will be that opportunity to say, yes, we want to go with it, or we don't, depending on what you're sending out, I guess.
Ultimately, the council will have the final decision on it. A lot of the work will be done, I would imagine, at the Board of Public Works, but perhaps Mr. Happel can expand on that part of it, too.
Thank you, President Cotter. The questions that are being raised are, are very pertinent, but they're also very premature. What needs to happen is the request for proposals going out, which, as President Cotter said, will entail a lot of options in there. And we, we can't allow ourselves to get bogged down in the specifics now, because first, the proposal has to go out with the options, and then we'll find out what those options cost. has to go out with the options, and then we'll find out what those options cost. For example, one thing that's being looked at, which would be an option included in there with respect to the elderly, is put an option in, and we're looking at doing something that Madison does, where if you have a person, because of age or a disability, cannot get their cart down to the curb, the driver will go up to their garage and get it for them. Now, there's a cost, but we don't know what that cost is until we have the various haulers give it back to us. With respect to the yard waste, Mr. Becker, we could go into a long discussion on that. Now, actually, I mulch the grass, so I don't know if I want to pay for your yard waste or not, but that's not a decision for me to make. That's a decision that we see, and maybe when the options come back, it costs ten thousand dollars, and that's all it is for the whole city, no big deal. Or maybe it's more than that. See, we don't know the answers to that, and that's why this, the RFPs need to go out there. Then it comes back for a screening to the Board of Public Works, ultimately to the full council, and then we can make the decisions. Is it worth so much to have the elderly do this? Is it so, worth so much to have automated carts, so we don't have the workers' comp costs and everything included in that? And we make those decisions, and I think Dale really needs to get this out by, like, January, so that we get everything back in time to make a decision for January of two thousand fourteen. So, the questions are excellent. Hold on to the questions, but we won't get the answers until we are able to send these proposals out and see what the one, two, three, five, ten, however many haulers respond to us, and what the cost and what the options are going to be for that. So, that, that's really where we're working. I, I will add that included in this, it will be a great emphasis on recycling, increasing the recycling, and as you increase recycling, you lower the garbage, and there is a cost savings, because the hauler can probably make a little money on recycling. They're just straight up paying for the garbage when they, when they put it in the landfills or the exal energy or wherever that might go. So, I'd keep our, our decision just based right now on the authorization to get something out there, knowing it has to fully come back to us, and at, at, at a risk, I will say, and this is not for a decision tonight, but at some point, I will probably bring forward, or at least through the next year's Budget Parameter Committee, the notion of perhaps taking the garbage off the taxes and putting it...
Well, let's not go there tonight.
But that's not for tonight, but that's just, but when you mentioned the funding, that's, could be another discussion at some point in the future.
Mr. Sherf?
My questions were answered. Thank you for consideration.
You're welcome. Nobody else? Oh, Mr. Schwanz.
A reminder that there's a timeframe with this whole thing, and that's why I'm seconding, I think, what Mr. Happel just said. If, if you think we should be exploring this possibility, there, we're not, we're not obligating ourselves to anything, but if we want to explore this possibility, we need to move forward, otherwise, we're gonna be out of sync with, because contractors have to have enough, if we go that way, they have to have time to get new equipment and everything else. So, there are deadlines in this thing, so hopefully, you'll support the, the resolution and allow us to go forward, and I suppose, in some ways, test the water. Thank you.
Are you ready to vote? On the board, please. Mark me as a yes, please. Terry?
Moving on, the council, the Chair will recognize the council member from the Tenth District.
Thank you, Your Honor. Items thirty-six through forty, all presented for final roll call. Item thirty-six is a resolution authorizing the Board of Public Works to negotiate a contract between the Boys and Girls Club of La Crosse regarding graffiti cleanup and authorization to issue requests for proposals for graffiti cleanup, which cannot be completed by the Boys and Girls Club. Item thirty-seven is a resolution approving intergovernmental agreement and participation in group education and outreach efforts to satisfy requirements of the City MS4 discharge permit. Item thirty-eight is a resolution authorizing the creation of an air service development fund and transfer of funds. Item thirty-nine is a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from passenger facility charge to the passenger facility charge reimbursable account. And item forty, Your Honor, is an item resolution appropriating additional funds to the two thousand twelve miscellaneous curb and gutter project. I move for final roll call.
There's no discussion. Please cast your votes. Excuse me? All right, items thirty-six through thirty-nine, if there's no discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is carried. Item forty, what's the pleasure of the council? Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules. Please cast your votes. Motion is carried. Motion on the floor is to adopt. If there is no discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is carried. The Chair recognizes a council member from the Ninth District.
Thank you, Your Honor. I missed an announcement earlier this evening, and I forgot to mention our Committee of the Hall for next month because of a resolution passed in the early nineties. The, our Committee of the Hall would fall on the Presidential Election Day, so because of a previous council resolution, our Committee of the Hall will be on Monday, November fifth. I have items forty-one through forty-five. Item forty-one is a resolution approving banking services agreement with State Bank Financial. Forty-two, resolution approving the twenty thirteen dash twenty seventeen capital improvement budget, and I request to hold out. Forty-three, I have a resolution authorizing the release of funds in connection with repairs to Quint Two for the fire department, and that's a suspension of the rules, and, and I'll have a holdout to do that. Forty-four, a resolution adjusting wage rates for part-time, seasonal, and casual city employees effective September twenty-eighth, twenty-twelve. I'll hold that out because it's suspension of the rules. And forty-five, resolution authorizing the Director of Human Resources to secure services with Delta Dental for, for the union-sponsored volunteer dental plan for the term January first, twenty thirteen, through December thirty-first, twenty thirteen. That's all I have, Your Honor.
All right, items forty-one and forty-five, is there any discussion? Forty-one and forty-five, if there's none, please cast your votes. Motion is carried. Item forty-two, the Chair recognizes a council member from the Ninth District.
Thank you, Your Honor. On your desk is a, is a yellow sheet in the right-hand corner. It's marked number forty-two. Because of a resolution we have on the books, or an ordinance that we have on the books, any projected equipment item not previously listed in the capital budget requiring immediate funding will require two-thirds vote by the common council to include the funding in the current year, and I made this motion last year, which was to include all of them, so my motion is to approve items on the yellow sheet, items eleven, twelve, thirteen, forty-one, seventy-one, and two-twenty, and two-twenty-three. So, so we will need two-thirds majority to pass those, to have those included in the capital improvement budget.
All right, motion on the floor is to adopt the six additional items on the yellow sheet in front of you. Is there discussion on that motion? If there is none, please cast your votes. Motion is carried. On the remainder of the items in the capital budget, recommendation is to adopt. If there is no further discussion, please cast your votes.